Oh, yeah, geez, you guys got quiet. That's scary. Let me see what else I can get you to do. Anyone, please rise for the invocation. And Russ, when would you please come forward from the Springs Church?
Let us pray, please. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for these men and women who give of their time, their energy, their talents to serve this great city of Benita Springs. We ask God that you will bless our gathering with your divine wisdom from above as we deal with the issues facing our community. And, Lord, we pray this evening that you will provide a shield of protection around our police officers, first responders, our military personnel who daily lay their life on the line in order for us to enjoy our God-given freedom. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Councilman, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Councilman Longheart.
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, anyway. Anyway, let's see, how about we have a public comment on agenda items? And anyone, member of the public wishing to speak at this time to any agenda item, please come forward. Hey, you weren't paying attention, we already had that.
Mr. Mayor.
Right, thanks.
Members of the council. I see on the agenda, we have a bid for employee pension administration and other benefits, which I wholly endorse. The people should know, most people who are new to Benita don't know that we have like fifty-four, fifty-five employees. The city of, Benita Springs Utilities has twice the number of employees we have. And we provide good services. So, I think it's a tribute to the city managers, both Gary Price and Cal, that have hired and administered and provided leadership for our limited employees. It's a small part of our budget. We have core services provided. We have the lower, one of the lowest tax rate of any city of twelve thousand or more in the state of Florida. And that's a tribute to government light, which I hope this council will continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any agenda item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment on agenda items, and we are to proclamations and presentations. And let's see. There we go. And let's see, Alex Nunez. Are you here?
Yeah.
Hey, why don't you come on up here? And do you have an entourage with you? I see, I like to use the word "entourage" with my friend up there. Come on over here. Okay. How you been?
Good.
Good to see you. Where's all the paint? There's no paint on here.
No.
No? How do you get, how do you paint and not, come on over here.
I'm gonna borrow your shirt.
How do you? If I painted a fingernail somewhere, I would be like, oh, more on me than you. Anyway, that's not, because you're an artist, right? I forgot.
My hair was all.
Okay. This is a certificate of appreciation to Alejandro Nunez, and in recognition of a commendable dedication and effort for the mural titled "Always Will Be Bright," of the Art in the Sun Along Old Forty-One, and that's an old forty-one, Art in the Sun Along Old Forty-One program. Thank you so much for everything that you've been doing for us. They look wonderful into the art in public places. It is just amazing what you're doing for our community, so thank you so much. Please give them a half, please.[273.64][273.64][applause] It'd be nice if we had a picture, a rendering of it right here. We don't, do we?
We will.
Just imagine. Something, anyway.
We actually had somebody comment. We actually had somebody comment and asked when the new building went up next to Century Link, so what you've done to approve that area, thank you, Alex, very much again.
Oh, here's a picture.
Okay, ready? One, two, three, okay? Good.
Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you. And is there a representative from Century Link here, too?
Congratulations.
Could you come forward? Alejandro, please stay up here.
I'm talking about my building.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Sorry. Sorry, sorry. It's your building, right?
Hey, it's my new building.
How you doing? And this wouldn't be possible without having a building to paint it on, so. A palette, we need a palette and, yeah, right, whatever, like I know anything about it. Anyway, but it's a beautiful building here, and it's, and this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Century Link. And for their partnership dedication and support of the City of Benita Springs Art in the Sun Along Old Forty-One Program by proudly displaying the mural "Always Will Be Bright." Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Please give them a hand for participating in this.[357.44][357.44][applause] Thank you so much. Very much.
Just do the press release. Okay? Got everybody? I'm good.
You guys are just looking at YouTubers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's my pleasure. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, and we are to the consent agenda. Everyone take a look, we have items A through F, and everyone take a look at that real carefully and see if there's something you would like to have pulled or what you would, what your pleasure is, council.
Move to approve?
We have motion to approve the entire consent agenda, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
And just like that, we are to public, as yet another public comment, but this is on public comment on any city matter. Anyone wishing to speak at this time on any city matter, please come forward.
I just want to thank the council for their participation in the new city clock that will be across from Riverside Park. Very pleased. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Rick Steinmeier, I'd like to thank the Rotary Club for providing money for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Fred Forbes, I want to tell everybody, I'm really appreciative of efforts made on behalf of the communities to where the Board of Education is at least actively considering three different sites. I want to also say that the opportunity, there's a great opportunity, some of you may not agree with it, but the two sites that are up near the YMCA, there's a great opportunity to enter into a partnership with the Y and the city so that this high school could use those, like, ball fields, soccer fields, the YMCA's huge heated pool, which would give an opportunity for the high school to have a swim team. So I think it's really a good thing. I would like to think that if the school board decides on any one of these three sites, that everybody will follow the advice that has been given historically, that they know what they're doing, support it. And I think that you have a good opportunity to see that high school built in Benita. Now particularly, I want to thank the efforts of Councilman Simmons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Linda Schwartz, and I live in Cedar Creek. I want to thank the city council members who've worked with the Lee School Board on finding three viable locations for the new high school, which is very badly needed in Benita Springs. The two sites on East Terry are especially attractive in that they would avoid the increasing traffic congestion on Benita Beach Road. They are walkable and bikeable for many students, and they could share some resources with the YMCA. I also want to applaud the school board members for their hard work and diligence in site selection, and thank you, council members, for following their lead and allowing them to select the most appropriate site.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hello, gentlemen and lady, how are you? I want to thank you for your time this evening. I have never really followed municipal government, and I think you guys, from what I've seen and lady do a terrific job, and we really want to thank you for all your efforts every day in making Benita Springs what it is. I've been a member of the community now for about thirteen years and love it. I am a resident of Hunter's Ridge.
And what's your name?
I'm sorry, Bill Bell. And I did have an opportunity to talk to Councilman McIntosh before the start of the meeting, and it was good to get to know you. But I do want to applaud you for your ability to think out of the box, allow the Board of Education to look at other sites that are more meaningful and appropriate for the high school, and we applaud you for doing that. And I think it's really important that you understand from our perspective that we believe that Benita Springs does deserve a high school, and we are very supportive of just making sure that we find the one that provides the best and appropriate landscape for a building of that size, understanding that we need to make sure that we provide the right safety as well as the opportunity for education to all of the students that will be attending there. But again, thank you for all your support.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilman, council lady. My name is Richard Decost, and I am a resident of Hunter's Ridge. I wanted to focus this evening on just a concern that I think the entire council members and I share with the speed at which the new school site is being selected. It needs to move very quickly, and I realize that you know that. I think the students in City of Benita Springs will be hurt if the school board cannot move quickly and place this school in Benita Springs. Some observations that I would make in the recent past, it seems that we've had some supporting the Tower Road site as well as Hunter's Ridge site, or the site in front of Hunter's Ridge. Both sites were not suitable, and I think that was discovered by the school board and by others, by the outcry that occurred from the residents. I think when that happened, the school board decided and were influenced to reexamine sites then visited, and that process is going on right now. The East Terry sites, that area, seem to be suitable. I think as I've read the newspapers and I've talked to people about this, I don't think we have any site that is 100% perfect. However, there are some advantages to the East Terry sites, and those have been enumerated in the past. I think that time is running out, and as a resident in this community, I would urge the city council to support the school board in any way that they can, to find a suitable location as quickly as possible. I think personally, I'd like to see a target of the end of the year for a site to be selected. That's easy for me to say and probably very difficult to do, but what a terrific Christmas gift to the city as well as the students and the students' families if that could be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, hello?
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I've already spoken about the school, so I'm not going to repeat, but it was my understanding there were eleven sites that were to be considered, and when the school board looked at them all, the only one that met all of their requirements was the one in front of Hunter's Ridge, which of course has resulted in a huge outcry that people don't want it there. And as you all know my feelings of the DRGR, I never had any problem with any building in the DRGR, and that includes the site that the school already owns, or if there are other locations in, along Terry Street that meet all of their requirements, there shouldn't be any compromise. If they found a site that has met their requirements, I will, this I will say again, I've said it twice already, and I've told them all, stiffen up your backbone, make the decision, say, this is where it's going to go. The only thing that's completely off the table is Conservation 2020. Do not, they cannot touch Pine Lake Preserve under any circumstances, not for a land swap or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. And seeing none, we will go ahead and move along. Oh, excuse me, oh, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpersons. Max Levine for Cardome LLC, where the folks trying to build the car wash. Just a quick statement, I know we're entering into the fludra process, the mediation process, and then we'll have a special magistrate who issues findings if that doesn't work. I just urge you to take another look at the merits of this dispute. We're asking to develop our land for a use that's allowed by law through this process, and to be honest, your staff has not given you a legitimate reason to deny that request. More importantly, the way staff has dragged us through this process, and this is not the forum in which to go through the details of that, has sent a very real chill on development opportunities for Benita Springs. Folks at Grady Minor, at Henderson Franklin, at Pavees, and at DeLisi Fitzgerald have watched and participated in this process, and I know for a fact that they're telling their clients to pump the brakes on bringing new development opportunities to Benita. You're losing business as we speak. We're already a part of the community. My team has committed to give 25% of our tips at the Fort Myers location to the Harry Chapin Food Bank. My group has sponsored the Benita Middle School basketball team. We've done the same for the Fort Myers Senior High, and just yesterday, I agreed to sponsor a youth basketball team in Dunbar, which is going to be coached by one of my employees. But by following the staff's opposition to our project, you're spending taxpayer money, I believe at a clip of about $350 an hour for your outside counsel alone, to prevent us and others like us from bringing more jobs, services, improved aesthetics, tax revenue, and charitable efforts to Benita Springs. I'm confident we're going to win, and I'm confident that my group has a future in Benita Springs. So I'm asking you to help right the ship. We're just asking for a fair shake. Please direct the city attorney to mediate in good faith, and please accept the results of the fludra special magistrate process. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city-related item? Okay, we will go ahead and move on from public, or onto public hearings. We have first readings here. Audrey.
Thank you. I'm going to read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance to amend Sections 3-415, 3-419, and 3-423 of the City of Benita Springs Land Development Code related to the Landscape Code, creating Section 3-428, enforcement of installation and certification, to update the code to require smart irrigation and Florida-friendly design standards, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, inclusion in code, scrivener's errors, and effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. It is a land use ordinance, and as much public comment is allowed at this time. Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan will provide you with an analysis if you need it as to the ordinance. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, which is on file with the city clerk, and it is legally sufficient. Please proceed.
Hello?
Good evening. For the record, Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan, here to present the proposed amendments for Chapter Three in regards to the Landscape Code. Again, these are some of those codified things that we're looking to amend to meet our Florida Green Building Coalition application. They're in regards to adopting Appendix X, I'm sorry, Appendix F of the irrigation standards of the Florida Building Code, the plumbing portion. They're looking at requiring smart irrigation controls and Florida-friendly design standards, which are already required by Florida State statute. They are also better explaining maintenance practices and standards throughout the Landscape Code, and also looking to ensure enforcement of installation and certification of landscape and irrigation. Nothing within this ordinance is going above and beyond what's already required by Florida statute. Again, it's updating our code to further reflect that, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have may have in regards to this.
Thank you very much. Well done, as usual. And council, you have any questions before we go to public comment? No questions? Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Any member of the public wishing to speak to this, at this time, this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send us to a second reading?
Send that to second reading.
And I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart. Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, what do you have next?
And I just want to point out, on both ordinances, the Landscape Code and the tree protection, there will be some minor changes between this draft and the next draft. They're mostly grammatical. We did add testing language along with installation and certification in the landscape. I just wanted to bring that up. The second ordinance is an ordinance related to the tree protection ordinance in sections 7-226 and 10, purpose and scope, 7-228 definitions, and 7-235 issuance of permits, criteria, site plans, and fees, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, inclusion in code, scrivener's errors, and effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The second reading of the ordinance will be held December 16th in these chambers, beginning at 9:30 AM. I have reviewed the, sorry, nine o'clock. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. A copy of it is on file with the city clerk. Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan has worked on this ordinance and will provide staff comments.
Jennifer, what have you been doing?
Hi. Thanks for having me back. Again, for the record, Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan, this amendment is to our Chapter Seven in regards to our tree preservation ordinance, again, updating the ordinance to reflect the criteria within the Florida Green Building Coalition standards, to broaden the definition of a tree protection map, to include a tree survey, and also to not require a permit for exotic removal of clearing. And third is to tighten up some of the submittal requirements for that tree protection map in regards to the survey, and to make sure that there's some options for applicants in regards to that, so.
Very good. Council, any questions before we go to public comment? Seeing none, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
Go ahead and move this to the second reading, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to send this to a second reading. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, you on to item 11.
Thank you. And now, second reading of the following ordinance. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapters Three Development Standards, and also Chapter Four Zoning, amending Section 3-491 related to site design standards, amending Sections 4-408, 4-661, 4-718, 4-740, 4-1098, 4-1122, 4-1465, 4-1467, 4-1472, 4-1473, and 4-2072, creating Sections 4-888 through 4-895, the US 41 overlay district, providing for purpose and intent, applicability, definitions, permitted uses, specific site design standards for the US 41 overlay district, parking and circulation, intersection design and corner lots, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The affidavit of publication is legally sufficient and on file with the city clerk's office. Alexis Crespo will provide you with any comments, although you have seen her presentation, so I don't believe we're going through a full presentation, just questions and answers.
Okay.
Good evening, Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering. As noted in the green sheet, there are just very few minor refinements to the ordinance since the first reading, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions? Any questions at all? No? Okay, let's go to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, the second reading of this, please come forward. Seeing none, council, what would you like to do?
Go ahead and adopt the ordinance, please.
We have a motion to move to second reading?
I thought it was in the second.
It is second reading.
We have a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh. Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye. Thank you very much. Alexis, good job. Thank you. And we are to the, it sounded like the city attorney's report there, didn't it? But it's not. This is it. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have one item on the agenda today, and it's discussion relative to the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act petition that was filed by Cardome LLC that is scheduled for this Friday, December 4th. You have the city's comments as far as special counsel's, Bob Pritz's response that we filed, I believe it was filed this week, as to, you know, the substantive issues. We did also file an additional response as to jurisdictional. You can take a look at the merits if you wish to, council. I'm not asking you to do that today. I do want to point out, I am not paying $350 an hour for special counsel. I've never paid that amount for a special counsel at the city. So I think that might be the amount combined, if you're looking at special counsel and having to pay the hearing examiner. I do agree with Mr. Levine that it does get to be very expensive going through a lot of these processes. But you do have a copy of the stuff. What I do need to have from you today is this Friday, we go through the process, and we are required to have at the hearing, and this is straight out of the statute, a person with authority to bind the city to a settlement or to recommend a settlement directly to the persons, which is city council, with authority to bind that party. I've talked with the city manager, and the preference would be to have somebody from city council. We could have staff, but again, this is something where we would want somebody who would take it back to council if there was a difference in direction. Obviously, I think staff has been, made some accusations, so having you guys, since we're just supporting your vote, would make more sense possibly.
Okay, a little clarity with that. I got confused there. You said someone that will be present there that can bind counsel at that time?
They would actually recommend the settlement directly. So it would be where they would have, obviously, at a public hearing.
Right.
At a public meeting, following the hearing, which would be December 16th. If there was an order that was ready, if not, it would be at a later date, they would be able to explain to counsel, this is why we went with this. It's no different than mediation, except it is, it is different than mediation in the sense that the public has a right to be in attendance for all the discussions.
But cut into the chase there, that person would bind counsel at that time? So what you're asking is for counsel to give them the authority to bind counsel at that time? Or that he has to come back to counsel for?
It would come back to counsel.
There you go. That's what you need to hear.
Yep.
Okay? So regardless of what commitment they make at that time, it would have to come back to counsel?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And counsel would, depending on what happens, it would either be a mediation report type, you know, and whoever was selected would explain the rationale, why yes or no.
So it's more of a tentative negotiation at that time?
It is.
That they would agree with tentatively until, and it would be a contingent on counsel's approval? I'm trying to put it in layperson's terms.
Yeah, that's part of it, yes, but there's a second part of it, which is because it's not a traditional mediation, that's a traditional mediation, because it's also a fludra, the hearing officer has the right to make a decision different than what the counsel has decided. And then what could happen is counsel could either accept or reject in whole or in part that recommended order.
At that time?
No.
So it came back?
At your next meeting or the next available, when we're able to analyze it and provide it to you.
So, so to get even further complicated or clarity, excuse me, I get those two things confused. You have the fludra hearing right there, and then there's a tentative agreement made that, the hearing, like hearing examiner, is that what you called it? Or the mediator is there? Or the mediator is there?
The special magistrate, but yes.
Special magistrate mediator is there. They understand that they have to come back to counsel. And you're saying if counsel doesn't do that, well, the hearing examiner has the right to go ahead, or the special magistrate?
Okay.
Can go ahead and decide?
No.
It's a little confusing, because it's my first time going through this process, so let me try.
Me too.
Let me try and go through it again. Because usually, we have mediation, and it's, that's an easier process for me to explain. Under this statute, we could potentially, and we'll see how the magistrate desires to have the hearing, because it could change, we could have, it's very similar to the zoning hearing, and go through the evidence again as to what we have on paper with the evidence, and also any additional new, both for us as well as for the applicant, the applicant is here. So it could be more as the hearing process, or the special magistrate could decide that it's better to try to do it more as a mediation-type process. At the end of the day, either the parties are lucky, they're creative, they work out some kind of collaborative deal, that happens sometimes, sometimes it does not happen. If that does not happen, the hearing officer will write up his order with his findings as to what he thinks the outcome. In that event, so somebody comes, we'd have to take something back to counsel, regardless, it goes back to counsel. It will either go back as like a mediation report where I take it back to counsel, I prepare the documents, and that mediation report, and the person who is the delegated person by the council to act as the city's rep will say, yes, this is why, and why not on different things. Or alternatively, if we are not able to find a successful outcome, and there is a hearing officer's report, we, that, we bring that back to counsel.
Okay.
Did I?
Hmm.
And yes, the public can attend. It's not like a normal mediation where there's confidentiality, this is one that's open to the public.
Okay. All right, all right. Counsel, do you have any questions? Or have I wore you out with this?
Can you just repeat all that again?
And let me also add, while the public has a right to observe the hearings, the only people who have a right to talk during the hearings are the participants, which would either be the city or the applicant, because there was a very short window time for other people to be participants. They had to either be involved in the zoning hearing or adjoining property owners, and they had to give their notice to the city clerk within a twenty-one-day window, and nobody did, after we sent the notices to them.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, Audrey, whoever's the delegate there from the council, if the mediator says, okay, here is my decision, we can, it's not binding, is that correct?
It's a recommended order.
It's a recommended order. It's nothing that's binding that takes place at that time.
Correct. It's a recommended order that has to come back to city council, and city council either has to have particular, let's say, we're able to find modifications and there could be acceptance, we would have to go back through a public hearing process, because you still don't have a right to let the public not hear what's going on.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So.
Got it. Is it going to be recorded? Can we watch it later if we're not there?
No. It's not something where I was planning to have.
But there will be a court reporter there, right?
No.
No?
I don't believe anybody, now, I could look to see if anybody, I mean, if the applicant ordered a court reporter, there is no obligation to have a court reporter.
Okay, so it's be there or be square, right?
Basically.
Okay, but you could have.
But I am looking for a delegate, whether you want somebody from staff to serve.
We're getting there, we're getting there. We're trying, we're trying to figure out how, how, how much we're going to hate wanting to have somebody do that.
Oh, you're going to hate this.
What time is it?
Who wants that job? Nobody.
We begin at nine AM.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions before we try to pick who this should be? Go ahead.
Originally, I'd considered volunteering for this thing. I am a state Supreme Court certified mediator, but I can't that morning, I'm tied up. But I'd suggest someone on staff like John Gucciardo, who's an attorney and has, has the experience with this issue, to take the place of our delegate or be our delegate. I didn't check with Carl, I haven't, this is just something that, and I didn't, oh, I didn't check with John.
Well, we'll move to approve.
You don't want lawyers to be your delegated person either.
Why?
As much as I would love to accept this.
Okay, stop there.
Assignment, I'm off Friday afternoon, and I have a feeling this will go longer than just the morning. Sorry.
What's the date of this again?
It's Friday, December fourth, beginning at ten o'clock until we complete it.
You said nine.
I know, I said nine. I've looked at my calendar now.
Is there any person on council that cannot participate? So if the mayor, is he exempt?
No, again, this is something philosophical as to who you may want. It's Councilman Gibson's district. But it's adjoining your district, Councilman Slacta, it's adjoining your district, Councilman Simmons. You may want somebody who is no longer going to be on council, because they don't, you know, they might be more open. You're, you may have the mayor who wants to have a more global look, it's up to you. If you did put a staff person, we did talk, but we have some people in mind. You don't ever want a lawyer to, I'm, I'll be here for the technical, the lawyer stuff.
Well, you can stop right at that statement right there.
Yep.
You don't ever want a lawyer.
To be doing your business calls.
You're welcome out there, you're welcome. You can all use that one. Okay, well, okay, we know what you need, I think. Counsel, what's your pleasure? What would you like to do? Does anybody want to volunteer for the thing? You're not available? Not available? Not available?
I would, I would, I would appreciate it if the staff could do it.
Does the staff feel comfortable doing that? The answer is no, but will you do it?
The staff will do whatever council wishes us to do.
Well, you know, mediation is typically just getting the sides out anyway and making sure that the positions are clear, and the mediator is going to try to cajole both sides to give something up, so that nobody ends up happy. But that's my job, as mediator.
Sure.
And I do a pretty good job not making everybody happy. That's where it goes. So, you know, I, it's coming back to council anyway, to the diocese, so it's a, it's a wonderful learning opportunity for somebody like Arlene, you know. What?
Well, I think we should let the manager decide.
I would recommend that that not be the case, only because she's directly over community development in a line authority. She's also an AICP planner, probably has opinions about this. I would recommend that not be the appointment.
Do you have somebody in mind?
Sense about the issue.
And is it possible to have it video recorded, so we can watch it later? Because I mean, I would love to go, I just can't go at that time.
If somebody can provide me with, if staff can provide some kind of tape recording system, I mean, again, the public has a right to be there, so it's.
Why don't you, why don't you just do that? It can be recorded, not tape, it can be tape recorded really easily, right? If that's allowed.
I would imagine.
Aren't we being in separate rooms? I mean, this thing's going to be spread all over the building, right?
We don't know how the special magistrate wants to do it, so it's either going to be in separate rooms, or it's going to be all in city hall. So there is a chance that we won't be separating out that often, but I can't tell you.
Will the magistrate have the powdered wig on? Because I might rearrange my schedule.
I have never met him, so I don't know.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've made two suggestions. Carl, do you have a suggestion? I mean.
Frank Cassidy, possibly.
What about Frank Cassidy?
I'd be okay with Frank doing it. Frank's been, Frank's been far enough.
There you go.
Hey, boy, Frank.
Can you be here Friday, Frank?
Yes.
Sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
There you go.
Sir, yes, sir. Nice.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
And then the motion, excuse me, the motion is to make Frank Cassidy do something he horribly doesn't. Roll call.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Frank, you're welcome.
Sorry, Frank.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, what else you got for us, Audrey?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. And the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, last night, we had a wonderful Holiday in the Park event once again.
Yes, we did. Yeah. Yes, we did.
Thank you to Laura Taylor and her team once again, as well as the maintenance guys from Parks and Recreation, and our wonderful, wonderful volunteers who really make it happen. So thanks to everyone for a great event. I think some people were kind of looking for it to, to be something that was going to be less than what we've done in other years, simply because of construction downtown.
Fantastic.
That did not happen.
Mm-hmm.
And we continue to have successful events, even though we've got construction downtown. So we also appreciate the people that come by and attend, because it's really for them as well. Also, I was downtown this morning, took a look at Community Hall. At the time I looked at it, there was one half of one wall left. So I'm sure the building is down by now. So just a status report on that. And that's all I've got for manager's report.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, and counsel, let's, Bill, let's go ahead and start with you. What do you got for us today, Bill?
Well, Holiday in the Park was outstanding, and you know what I did by myself, nobody around, I envisioned what the possibilities or what's going to happen down there with all that construction is, and I said, my gosh, how wonderful that'll be for years to come for all the people that live in Benita Springs. And of course, we have plenty of guests that come from outside. So that's all I have to say.
Excellent, thank, well done, Bill. Dr. Steve, what do you got for us?
Yes, sir, thank you for Holiday in the Park last night, and just for counsel's notice, I've been working with staff to try to integrate all the various environmental and natural resource policies we have, which are overwhelming at times. And they're making great progress on bringing forward a readable, workable piece that integrates all those pieces into a workable language for people. So it's, right now, it's in fourth, fourth or fifth draft, but I'll be, I'm going to ask some outside folks to take a look at it before I bring it to the diocese, just to make sure we haven't fooled ourselves. But the real question we looked at last time was, does it satisfy the customers from a technical point of view on environment and from a, from an applications point of view as, as citizens? And we're making great progress, and I want to thank staff for spending the time on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mike, you have anything for us today?
No, I just want to say thank you to staff for a great Holiday in the Park again, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Janet?
Awesome. I know, I'm going to say it again. We have to, just have to. It snowed in Benita Springs last night.
Kind of sort of.
And it was really, really awesome, and it just shows, again, what a terrific community we live in. So staff is awesome, our Parks and Recreation folks are awesome, special event staff is awesome, the volunteers, the special event committee, they work so hard, they're on their feet the whole day putting that thing together, and then they stay all night to make sure it's, everything is put back away, so it was awesome. I also want to thank our community policing and our Benita Fire members and all these folks for being part of what makes it a great community to live in. It was just my favorite event. So thank you to everybody who was involved, even the vendors, all the participants, thank you so much, it was great. And I just want to shout out about the Benita Springs Assistance Office is doing their stocking fund, so don't forget, folks, that's out there, and they all can use your help. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Peter, what do you have for us today?
Absolutely, well said, Janet and everybody before her, great event last night, a lot of families, a lot of friends, a lot of, a lot of everything going on down there last night, it was fantastic. And the Christmas tree lighting, yes, and the switch that came back down, you see, so, you know, I guess it really doesn't matter if that switch is on or off, the tree's going to go on, but I don't.
It's kind of a secret.
What? Don't let those secrets out.
It's momentary.
But no, it was wonderful, it was wonderful, and good job of the Rotary, selling, selling Christmas trees, by the way. Went down there on Sunday and got a tree. Don Thompson was a great help, and we got a beautiful tree, which I know you were doing last night, Carl, and thanks for following up with me this morning on that issue. Everybody keeping an open mind, as always, on the high school. We are making progress, there have been more discussions. I'm sure people up here have had discussions or heard from some folks, so I'm glad we did some follow-up there, because that continues to move in the right direction. And on a sadder note, unfortunately, PD's team did not win the state championship, they lost a close game, twenty-two to sixteen, had leads of eight to nothing, six to eight, but in the end, lost, so our Benita Springs young men and the Stero Young Men are runners up in the state of Florida to the Donnell and Tigers, but it was, it was a good experience, so.
It's always next year.
Next year, next year, absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much, Peter. Yes, Stephen?
It's all been said, and I agree with everybody. I think the sad part is that Bill Lockhart and Janet, that was your last hurrah, and so we will definitely miss you in the future.
It was our last.
Well, they're termed out.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's see, yeah, I'll let it go at that, it was a great time, thank you so much, and Laura does a fantastic job, all of you staff members do a fantastic job. People really don't get a chance to really see that behind the scenes, what you all do, they see what happens here in the meetings and everything like that, and that's just such a poor snapshot in time. You do a great job here, too, but you, I'm so proud to work with all of you, so it's been, it's been a pleasure, always has been here, so thank you so much. And at this time, would you like to approve the minutes, counsel?
Will.
Have a motion and a second for the minutes of eleven-sixteen and eleven-eighteen. Roll call.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
And at this time, public comment on any city item. Anyone wishing to speak this time, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Hey.
I know the city has been in negotiation with the Sheriff's Department, and I think it's one of the greatest contracts signed, because we're doing so well with so few, and crime rate is low. Let's talk about crowds. Old Forty-One is being rejuvenated, and rightly so. And I'm glad it's, see the construction finally come into fruition. The Sheriff's Department should have a permanent presence in that area. And the reason I say that is because we're going to encourage pedestrian traffic. It's going to be the center of the city eventually. We're spending multi-millions of dollars there, and they need a place to work. I'm not going to trample on anybody's, anybody's negotiations that may be going on, except, as you know, I'm a retired captain, I spent thirty years doing this, and I think I speak with some integrity on police presence and prevention. Takes two things to commit a crime, opportunity and desire. We can't stop the desire fueled by drugs and greed and jealousy, passion, whatever, but we can certainly do something about opportunity. That's why it's important that we concentrate on police presence on Old Forty-One, once it's completed. That's my recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Merry Christmas. I'm Meg Jacobson, and I live in Old, Old Forty-One, no, I don't, I live on East Benita Beach on East Bonita Beach Road. And I just wanted to tell you how excited I am that I think we're finally going to have a high school in my neighborhood. And there's three locations that we've seen. They all look great. So, please support them, all of them. I think the Board of Education has done a wonderful job of hearing us out, and that's not easy, as you know, in your jobs. But they've listened, and I think the three locations are all great. One of them, well, two of them are near the Y, which gives us use of some of the fields and the pool, and helps offset some of the cost, which would be great. So, just wanted to say that I think all three are wonderful, and no arguments, no NIMBY. We're just happy that they're about to build. So, please support whichever one they choose, because we do too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hi, Kathy McGrath. I just want to tell a little bit about behind the scenes. Some of you know. I know Laura got there at 9:00. I got there at 10:00, and I got home at 9:15 last night, and I never sat down once. But that's not the point. Some of the Parks and Rec guys were there like at 6:00 in the morning. But I want to tell you something. The construction downtown did not deter anyone. You know that. And what we had to do, we had to compensate. We usually had the carriage rides. We couldn't do that. But we always knew that the kids wanted to touch the horses and take pictures. So, Laura very wisely booked two of them. We had Clydesdales and all. And we moved things over to Depot Park. And I want to tell you something, was that positive. The place was mobbed. The kids would get up and they'd take their pictures and they'd play with the horses. We had the little inflatable things there. We had kind of a problem. There's kind of a lack of electricity there, so there were a lot of extension cords, and the kids were trying to play around the stuff. But, I mean, it just, I just can't say enough. And we were working with the lines, doing the garland, excuse me, and they were blowing the snow, and we were there. I mean, we were getting snowed on. I'm talking about the snow area. But it was such a fun, positive day, and I can't say enough for the team I work with, you know, the special events committee, Parks and Rec. Oh, those guys are awesome. They really are. Our community policing. I was, well, I started going around picking up garbage even before it was over with. And you could just see the families sitting there enjoying themselves, and you could hear the comment. I never heard one negative thing all day long. So, and I tell everyone, if you know in your council people, or even if you don't, you know, all they hear are complaints. So, please thank them, because they're the ones, you guys, I've said it before, I'll say it again, you're the ones that make this positive, and it makes it fun for us to do. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening, Counsel. Greg DeWitt, District 2. Just, I wanted to say a couple things. I know we talked about the city, about the tree lighting last night, the Holiday in the Park. It was great. One thing I don't think we've mentioned is the Taste of Bonita. That was a couple of weeks before that. That was very good. It was, even though it rained, I was there most of the day on Sunday, and it was a great turnout. So, again, thank the city for kind of partnering with the Rotary and leaving it open. I know they stayed open a little bit later. It was a great thing. The other thing, to kind of talk a little bit about what Councilwoman Martin talked about, the Assistance Office. They need help. What we've done in the past at the Fire Department is the firefighters' union has done a calendar, and we've done another calendar this year. And the two major donors that we're going to donate to this year is going to be the Assistance Office again and the shelter. We've done it with a rescue me theme where every one of the firefighters that are posing in the calendar are with a rescue pet, either from the actual shelter itself or one that they have rescued from the shelter. So, they're on sale at the Fire Department, but the proceeds will go to the Assistance Office and the rescue shelter itself. Lastly, I do want to thank Matt Feeney, staff, everybody here at the city for two things. One, downtown, what they're doing down there and accommodating everybody, how to get there, putting sidewalks in, temporary roads. I think it's wonderful. As Kathy said, it's not deterred anything. The second part of it is, is I came back, I came to the council, to the council, I think it was in July, asking for a wall on East Terry, along and around my neighborhood and our neighborhood on Imperial Pines. I just want to, with everything that Matt has going on, he came up to me last night, and they're already starting to survey for that. So, with everything that's going on downtown, staff is not neglecting what else is going on in the city. So, I just want to commend staff again for that. I mean, this is a little 200-foot section of wall, 300-foot section of wall, and it's not being put to the wayside because of downtown. So, I want to thank staff and council for that again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant, 11-851 East Terry Street, former city council here. I was, had a conversation with somebody in town, and they suggested another location for the high school. And I thought, wait a second, that sounds pretty good. You know where the middle school is. Now, if we look at what's best for the children in Bonita Springs, and we have a situation where we can have a campus, where we have the middle school right next to the high school, and we have, the city owns the property behind the middle school, and think about this, use that as a potential high school, because you have the school kids interacting, middle school with the high school, and even better, the teachers at both middle school and high school interacting with one another. You could get the best of both worlds, and the kids would benefit from that. You could also expand that library in that location too, and have that as a real learning center. Think about that. It's an interesting idea that somebody suggested to me, and it wasn't my idea, but I was thinking about that and reading, you know, some of the articles in the paper, and I said, wait a second. This is something that we may want to seriously look at. It'll certainly benefit the school kids and the teachers and the administrations of both schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, everyone, and the meeting's adjourned.